I think it's already, hasn't it? The regular meeting of the Board of the Manatee County School District will come to order if you please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Barber.
Thank you, we got quite a crew out there waiting to come in, but we could have some exciting celebrations and announcements tonight. Come on down. Y'all come on down and just... So, we're looking forward to that as we get very close to the end of the school year here. So, we're going to start off with the STEM Alliance Awards. The school district of Manatee County participates in the STEM Alliance of Central Florida's Student Scholars Program, and the program recognizes students in 7th through 12th grade who are outstanding or significantly improved in their STEM coursework. So, here to tell us more is District Curriculum Specialist for Adult Career and Technical Education, Kelly Kennedy.
Welcome, Miss Kennedy.
Thank you. Chairman Hopes, Board Members, Dr. Green, I have the pleasure of standing before you this evening along with my colleagues Tracy Harwood and Deb Stevens, who unfortunately couldn't be here, to present the Central Florida STEM Alliance Awards. The STEM Alliance is an organization that exists to promote ongoing, long-term STEM workforce student preparation through curriculum-based programs and projects. They foster outreach that inspires students to pursue education in STEM careers through in-class projects, lectures, student competitions, and recognitions. They also exist to provide teacher professional development by augmenting existing teacher capacity and improving STEM readiness for graduating teachers. Additionally, they promote community awareness and involvement in STEM. Tonight, we will be recognizing students from middle and high school who have shown outstanding or increased proficiency in their STEM coursework and have participated at a high level in STEM activities outside of the classroom. So, I'm just going to get on with it. Our first group of students are middle school students who have been deemed by their nominating teacher as most improved. First, we have Zoe Thornton from King Middle School. Next, we have Depozvy Perohith from Johnson Middle School. And then, we have Hunter Turner, also from Johnson Middle School. Our outstanding students in middle school are Eden Gibbs from Nolan, Christian Bell from Braden River Middle, Gotham Gar from Johnson Middle, who could not be here tonight, unfortunately, Maya Lander from Nolan Middle. And now, we're going to move on to high school. Our first high school most improved scholar, excuse me, is Matej Rodriguez from Braden River Middle School, I mean, sorry, Braden River High School. Then, we have Caitlin Bush, also from Braden River High School. Our outstanding high school students are Griffin Hudson from Braden River High School, Gaurav Gar from Southeast High School. Another student who unfortunately couldn't be with us tonight is Michael Kissada from Braden River High School. And we also have Zach Morris from Southeast High School, Chloe King from Bay Shore High School, James Arias from Bay Shore High School. And our last student, unfortunately, who could also not be with us tonight, is Evan Lynch from Braden River High School. Tonight, we also have the privilege of recognizing outstanding teachers in each of the STEM areas. For science, Pat Zalo. Pat has been teaching science since 1986, so as you can imagine, she's done a lot. Science Fair Director, Florida Foundation for Future Scientists, Intel International Science Fair Secretary, Advanced Placement Reader, Coordinator of the AP+ Program at Manatee High School, Sponsor of the National Science Honor Society, Co-Director of our local science and engineering fair, and I left off far more than I said. She has a passion for her students that is evidenced by this quote about teaching, or about her teaching. "In my first-year teaching, I realized that students needed to understand inferential statistics to properly analyze their data for a science project. Since then, I've used M&amp;M's to teach inferential stats, not only to my students, but at more than 30 state, local, national, and international conferences." Boy, I really wish I'd had her for statistics in college. So, ladies and gentlemen, Pat Zalo. This year, for technology, we're recognizing Kristy Gearing. After gaining valuable experience in the corporate world, Kristy Gearing decided to be a teacher like her mom and her sister. Kristy's been a business teacher and future Business Leaders of America advisor at Braden River High School for 11 years. Currently, serving as the school's Career and Technical Education Department Chair and Grade Book Manager, she teaches 9th through 12th grades students courses in accounting, digital information technology, and diversified career technology. I personally have had the pleasure of knowing Kristy for more than 10 years, and she is very humble about her influence at Braden River High School. She truly is one of the most respected teachers I know and someone that can always be depended upon to go the extra mile. A highlight from this year is having over 75% of her accounting students become QuickBooks certified. Ladies and gentlemen, Kristy Gearing. This year, in engineering, we are recognizing Richard Platt. Richard is the engineering teacher at Southeast High School. Richard came to education after a rather colorful history working as a CAD software developer and in the supercomputing industry. He also had a little job with NASA in flight operations as a space shuttle designer, no big deal. He's been teaching in Texas and Florida for more than 15 years and is the current Chairman of the State Board for the Technology Student Association, better known as TSA. One of the things that Richard is most proud of is his students and their accomplishments. Currently, they're designing and building CNC machines and manufacturing robots with open-source plans so that schools around the country can reproduce the model and be more cost-effective, not having to pay as much for those machines is a big deal. Ladies and gentlemen, Richard Platt. Our last recognition is, unfortunately, someone who couldn't be here tonight in math, and that's Ann Flurry. Ann is a math teacher at Lakewood Ranch and has also taught at SubMiddle. Ann has been a teacher for 21 years and has served as Department Chair, Vice President, and President of the Manatee County Teachers of Mathematics. She's taught all levels of math, and her AP scores are constantly above the national average. Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in congratulating our outstanding teachers and
If we have any parents here, could you stand or raise your hands, please?
And I forgot to recognize the teachers who are here as well. A lot of their teachers are here.
Okay, great, thank you. Now, it's time for you to get a picture with the board in the background. Can I try to get right there? Ready? One, two, three.
Can I ask him? Ms. Kennedy, the STEM Alliance, this is through the Central Florida School Board Coalition. I just wanted to make sure Mr. Minor heard that the STEM Alliance is through the Central Florida Coalition.
You're wrong. Okay, great. This next batch of award winners and student celebrations involves mathematics superstars. I'm sure everyone on the dais was a mathematics superstar coming up, but each year, teams from the Manatee District Elementary Schools are invited to participate in the mathematics superstar competition sponsored by the American Association of University Women. This year's competition was held at Manatee Technical College last month. Here to tell us more is District K-5 Curriculum Specialist for Mathematics, Krista Heats. So, Krista.
Welcome.
Good evening. The mathematics superstar competition is a longstanding Manatee County schools tradition, and our students have participated in this event for over 20 years. Two 4th and/or 5th grade students from each school earn a spot in the competition by completing challenging math questions throughout the year and compete as a team. On April 21st, 2018, the American Association of University Women sponsored 27 schools and 54 students for the 2018 mathematics superstar competition. All participants received a T-shirt, a bumper sticker, and the top four teams each received a monetary award and a calculator. Tonight, we honor the four top teams. Some of our students could not be with us tonight, but first-place winners were Arjon Sandu and Callum Wilford from Willis Elementary School. Second place is Vale Johnson and Spante Lindstrom from McNeil Elementary School. Third-place winners are Mason Ackerman and Angel Moreno from Onico Elementary School. This year, we had a three-way tie for fourth place. Unfortunately, our participants from Braden River and Freedom Elementary School could not be with us, but Isabel Deal and Gavin Moore from Braden River, and Keith Folsom and Leah Normontas from Freedom unfortunately couldn't be here, but Alexander Negov from Stewart Elementary and his partner Claire Bailey received fourth place. Congratulations to our math superstars this year.
I'll have you all move over this way so you get right in the center here. Tracy, do you want to come on? Tracy helped with both, our first recognition. Okay. All right. Okay. All right, here we go. I was getting a phone call. One, two, three. One, two. Parents? Can we have parents stand up if you're in the audience? Parents? Parents? All right? Okay, thank you very much. Red, let's go down there. And Mr. Cologne, I believe you're coming down here as well. Oh, Gina, I'm sorry, Gina. Gina, I'm sorry.
It's all right. I will always make way for a bedboard.
All right. Let's place these right here. Okay. That is first, and then they'll come over here. Okay, if we could have you all come stand right? All right. either K-12 or 1-12. So, they didn't miss a day of school for 12 or 13 years. And I always say, this is the absolute best board meeting for any employer in Manatee County to be watching, so, because you know you're getting somebody that's going to show up every single day. So, we're here to recognize those students and their parents for achieving this remarkable milestone. So, I'm going to call them alphabetically. We have a certificate, and we have a medal for each student. So, the first one is Lisette Alanis from Palmetto High School. Alanis, Lisette Alanis. If you could go stand over there. Okay. The second one is Corey Albrecht from Braden River High. The third, Gianna Hager from Manatee High. It's Gianna Hager. I'm sorry, I didn't get a chance to ask him for correct pronunciation. The next is Olivia Kendall from Manatee High. The next is Kendra MacLeod from Lakewood Ranch High. Next is Carter Nelson from Southeast High. The next is Marquez Simpson from Palmetto High. The next one is Devon Stewart from Southeast High. Last but not least is Shanara Taylor from Lakewood Ranch. Great, and if we have parents in the audience, if you could stand up, please? Y'all could squeeze in just a little bit. Yeah. They put in their tops.
Oh, no, no, we want them to come out. If the parents would come up, please? Let's get the parents and the children. Are the parents and the graduates, right? The graduates, the graduates. Parents and the graduates, please.
Is there anybody not going to that school? It's full of bulls, I mean...
Go Bulls, who's going to USF? All right, go Bulls, go Bulls.
Parents, go ahead and do next year, year graduate. And by the way, we'll be posting this tonight on our district Facebook and Twitter pages, so you can look for it there. Great, thank you very much. We do this every single year, and every single year, we bring the perfect attendance students in, and one or two of them always never shows up. So, we're always stunned by that. I think you're the first group where everybody showed up, so congratulations.
Congratulations, graduates. Okay, Mr. Barber, for presentation of the superintendent's coin of excellence.
Thank you very much. We're just waiting on the recipient to come into the boardroom right now. So, Roe, if you could come on down this way, please? All right.
She's trying to avoid us at all costs.
We have a special recognition. This is the superintendent's coin of excellence, and it's distributed by the superintendent to district employees and people who make a significant difference for the school district and for education in Manatee County. So, to tell us a little bit about tonight's recipient is the Director of Risk Management for the district, Bill Kelly.
Thank you. Good evening again. It's my pleasure this evening to tell you all about one of the many hard-working and dedicated employees we have and benefits. Most of them work behind the scenes and in the shadows, and you'll never hear their names unless something goes horribly wrong. We have an exception, and that's Roe, Roe Mohammed. She is anything except behind the scenes, she's more in-your-face. She is dedicated, though, to trying to get everyone in Manatee County that's an employee or a board member to live a healthier life. And she does so by arranging many opportunities for exercise. We have gyms in a lot of our facilities. We also have healthy vending machines now in many facilities, and she puts together tons and tons of classes for everybody to learn. But today, we're here primarily to recognize her for the fact that last month, she and a very small group of people got together and put on a wellness expo. It was quite a success. It was done without encumbering the district with any debt or anything, but had lots of opportunities to exercise, to get involved, to go to classes, and of course, to win some magnificent door prizes as well. And I think it was well-attended, and for her efforts in that, the superintendent wished to recognize her for that effort.
Hey, Roe.
Roe, I was at the wellness expo, and it truly was a sight to be seen. I think Mr. Kennedy was there, Mr. Cologne, several other board members were present. And to know that you did that in such a short amount of time was just amazing. So, you are indeed worthy of a superintendent coin of excellence for your commitment to health and wellness for district employees. You need to keep working on me, I'm not quite there yet. It's not for the lack of trying. It's not for the lack of trying. So, I would like to present this coin of excellence to you.
I genuinely appreciate this recognition and award. You know, executing a wellness or well-being program in an organization this size takes an enormous web of human energy and effort, and I really do want to accept this award on behalf of, oh my goodness, every department at Matzki, the far corners of the PSC, every floor of the SSC Manatee Technical College, and everybody in this room. So, thank you.
Thank you for all you did.
Any employee who can get Dr. Green to do the Cupid Shuffle on Saturday morning? Roe said that we're going to start having exercise periods during board meetings. Thank you very much. That's all, Mr. Chair.
All right.
I particularly like the puppies of the Petrus.
Oh, weren't they wonderful? Did you steal one? That was the idea.
I wanted one, but I was threatened by my wife.
Thank you, Mr. Barber. All right, members, we are on the approval of the agenda. The chair has found good cause to amend the agenda to include all items listed under Agenda Amendments on the May 22nd, 2018 agenda, updated May 21, 2018, and May 22, 2018, and posted to the district website. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. If you will please vote, place your votes to approve the agenda. See, seconded.
I forgot to move my...
Click, click, click. Technology. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right. Show the agenda adopted. As usual, in your packet is the information on leaves. Vice Chair Messenger, is there public comment?
Yes, there is. There are four people signed up for a public comment. The first is Steven Johnston, and after Steven Johnston will be Linda Scheich.
Good evening, Dr. Green, Chairman Hopes, distinguished board members. I would like to begin by thanking the board and Dr. Green for their time and attention and to wish Dr. Green great success in her future ventures. My name is Steve Johnston. I've been a resident and practicing occupational therapist in this county for 30 years, and I have the great pleasure to serve as the president of the Manatee High School Band Booster and Auxiliary Organization. I feel very fortunate to have two daughters that have attended Manatee High School and have been part of the Manatee High School Band Program under the leadership of Mr. Jim Bruce. As a parent and now head of the booster program, I've seen the qualities Mr. Bruce values and instills in his students. These are qualities that seem to be lacking in today's society. They include the value... They include the value of hard work, teamwork, striving for excellence, and showing by example the dedication and patience needed to achieve excellence. The ideals of fostering participation, and not just for the gifted musicians, but for all students willing to put in the dedication to hone their craft through practice, practice, and more practice. Now, don't get me wrong, Manatee County has a host of excellent and inspiring educators, and they should be celebrated. I don't think we do that enough, but that's not why I'm here. I'm here tonight because I believe Mr. Jim Bruce has been a shining example of what is best in Manatee County, and that the body of his 30 years of work at Manatee High School should be honored. And for this reason, I encourage the board to support the Band Booster Organization in their efforts to name the band room at Manatee High School, the Jim Bruce Music Hall. Thank you again for your attention.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thanks for your hard work.
Linda Scheich is not here.
She was just here.
She was?
She might be on, no, she might just be in the hallway.
Calling all Linda Scheich.
Want to come back to her?
Yeah, I will. Nope. All right. Bridget Mendel, and then Mr. Gibalina.
Welcome.
Good evening. Have to talk fast. I have a lot to say, as usual. We are breaking children. After four years of test and punish culture that we carry on here in Manatee County, we've arrived at this. We are breaking our children. We buy into the profiteering by our state's elected officials and governor. Instead of pushing back and going before the State Board of Education like Seminole County did last week, who brought students with them to testify, we cower in the corner and we say, yes, Governor Scott may have another. Last Wednesday was a seminal moment in our four-year history of test and punish. Cut scores were raised again by a group of old, wealthy, white men. Do you know that a Klan rally is more diverse than the Florida State Board of Education? Did you know that this increase in cut scores will drop our graduation rates, affecting mostly poor and minority students? These rich, old, white men who choose to throw out the pert, put the ACT, SET in its place, and increase the cut scores used to break our children, they do it in plain sight. Parents don't have a clue what's happening, and the district doesn't notify any of the stakeholders in our county. Seminole parents know because it was in their local news and word went out on their district website. Seminole's board and superintendent were not afraid to speak at the State Board meeting in St. Pete. Leadership invited broken children from Seminole to speak, who begged the homogeneous board of old, rich, white men to stop breaking them. The old white men didn't listen because there's a profit to be made on enriching themselves, their fellow legislators, family, and friends, which take priority. Then, this week, the House majority put out a video claiming that our schools are overstaffed and overfunded. As 35 Democrats in the Florida Legislature pushed for special legislation to address inadequate school funding, the Republicans in legislature pushed back and said our schools are overfunded and overstaffed. The 47-cent video myth accuses schools of spending too much money outside of the classroom. In fact, they said that 55% of school employees are, are less than 55 are, are classroom teachers, and more than, there are over 1,100 social workers, and on and on and on. Overindulging in social workers? How dare us waste taxpayer money to fix the children we are breaking? It completely interferes with the breaking of children for profit. Legislators would rather children get fixed in their charter schools that they own and voucher schools they legislate on behalf of. Imagine your legislature, you're a legislator, and you work for a salary on the side of $100,000 a year from an oil company. After you're elected, that oil company makes $1.3 million of your personal debt disappear, and then you start legislating on behalf of the oil company to double the drilling in the Gulf. Unethical, right? What happens every day in Tallahassee, starting with Manny Diaz? We allow our legislators to own, that own the charters and invest in voucher schools that they legislate on behalf of at the expense of our traditional public schools where most of our children that you all are breaking, learn. We must find a super that isn't in the business of breaking children with high-stakes testing, like Seminole, who shows up to State Board of Ed meetings with broken children and fights back. One that tells the state they won't be broken, one that will ignore ed tech investors who want to sell us garbage, untested software to use our broken children like guinea pigs. One that tells Galvano and Stube to sign the petition put forth by Senator Annette Tadeo, asking for a special session to address school funding. Tell them we won't want, want the NRA to dictate how we spend our money.
Thank you, Bridget.
If not, we'll end up breaking children in mass shooting if we do not listen.
Thank you, Bridget. Mr. Gibalina.
For the record, my name is Glenn Gibalina, taxpayer, community activist, and parent. Congratulations, Ms. Green. Unanimous, you will be missed. I want to talk about, I wrote, I wrote everybody a letter. As, as a taxpayer, I just want some answers on what else? Renewable energy. So, once again, I wrote the architect and the, of the, of the last school, Mr. Harper. Certified mail. Each and every one of you got a copy of it. And I urge for a meeting by May 22, and here it is, and not even a response. Not a response from the school board, not a response from the architect. $28 million of our tax money, and I expect an explanation from someone. So, I'm gonna read the letter, if I can. "Mr. Harper is a taxpayer who helps fund this school of over $20 million. I have a few questions I'd like to answer. How many schools has your firm incorporated solar renewable energy in the last 20 years? No answer. The value of solar, for so many reasons, troubles me, but I do not see any solar renewable panels in the budget, now at $28 million. Please explain to this taxpayer the reason not to incorporate renewable solar panels. Any other input, including the school board staff or others, would be appreciated. Explain to me why the taxpayers would not want our schools to have free energy for the next 20 years after the payback." So, if you can explain to this taxpayer why it's unfeasible monetarily wise, I'll go away. And I won't come up here and address that issue anymore. But being in the business for 30 years, I will tell you, there's no excuse. It's down to $2 a watt. It should be on every school, every, certainly every new school, and we should retrofit the old schools. So, you're a banker? Where, where are you gonna get 10, 15% return on the money? You're not. Yet, we go out and loan money through bonds at, what, 1/2, 1%? That's what we get. So, economically, it's not, it's feasible to start doing it. I think Manatee Technical College, cutting edge. When you walk into that campus, even if it's a demonstration model, you should be able to see some solar panels from the road, in the parking lot, and every school that's out there. It just makes good economic sense. That's all I'm saying. Of their records request on FPNL bills, 56 schools, hundreds of thousands of dollars. And it takes fossil fuel to do that. When are we gonna smarten up and start putting some energy back into the grid, and perhaps even getting a check from FPNL? So, I would urge you to answer my questions as a taxpayer. I'm entitled to it. And I'll be back next one. Thank you.
Thank you. One last call for Linda Scheich. Is she my home?
Okay.
Okay.
Is that it?
Oh, I understand. Mr. Minor says I should shout louder so that Mr., Ms. Scheich can hear me. Thank you for the advice. That concludes public comment.
All right, thank you, Vice Chair. Members, we are now on approval of the minutes of the, the one-on-one meeting between Mr. Kennedy and I, the board workshop of May 4, the, uh, superintendent, sorry.
Mr. Chair, I recommend approval of the minutes from the May 4, 2018 workshop, the May 8, 2018 workshop and regular meeting.
So moved.
I'll second.
Having been moved and seconded, are there any amendments or discussion, debate? Hearing none, members, if, please make your votes in approval of the minutes. Show the minutes adopted. Consent items. Dr. Green.
Mr. Chair, there, there's an error. We need to go back and redo this.
Okay.
I see something different on this screen versus what's on my book. So, I.
Back to the minute, the minutes?
Yes.
Okay.
You said it, but I did not say it in my recommendation, therefore, I'm not sure it would qualify.
Okay.
So, I'd like to.
Members, we will revert back to the approval of amendments. Dr. Green?
I recommend approval of the minutes from board member one-on-one, board workshop, May 4, 2018, school board workshop, May 8, 2018, and school board regular meeting, May 8, 2018.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Show the minutes adopted. Now, Dr. Green, thank you for the catch. Consent items.
Mr. Chair, I recommend approval of the consent agenda for May 22, 2018.
So moved.
I'll second.
Having been moved and seconded, is there any debate?
There's public comment.
Public comment.
Mrs. Mendel.
And is this on five or six? I have a comment for five-minute committee.
Consent items, it's all done as one thing, so you get three minutes to discuss all of the things in the consent agenda.
I have some information I'd like to give to the board as well. I'm talking about the spending $266,000 on a program called Reading Plus. There's an article online called Reading Plus, Is It Worth It? And there was a school in Coral Gables where they're actually using it, and they wrote about it in their school, high school newspaper. And I also got online, and I decided to look at it as a reading specialist myself, and was pretty horrified by what I saw. Then I proceeded to read the student comments that came along with the article. Just to give you some idea, it's another competency-based, mastery-based program where a text goes up on the screen, and then it, it blurs out, and all the child has to read. It's like to increase speed reading. And it is torturous. It is not research-based. For example, I'll just read some of the parents from the comments. "I hate Reading Plus program. There's no review of the vocabulary." This is from a parent. "My child has no concept how to use these words in everyday conversations. There's no repetition to learn them. It's not helped my child's ability to read." Here's from a student. "Reading Plus is just mental torture for children and not what is at all helpful and completely bizarre." Oh, I could go on for hours and hours. Another child said, "Reading Plus is a lot of stress on me. It's very hard to focus because the words move so quickly, and all the content to read is required. I do not recommend it. It has not helped my spelling or reading. It needs some Jesus." Another parent, "I'm very happy with this program. This article mentions only a few of the problems we are having. If my child fails a comprehension quiz, she's forced to read another section and take another quiz to get credit. There's no review of what she failed, no way to improve, or to measure improvement, or go back and review. Her life is miserable. I've sat through lessons with my child, and I even have difficulty with them." This is, you're gonna put it in eight middle schools, six high schools, you're gonna spend a quarter of a million dollars on it. There was a shooting on Friday, and every single law enforcement official and safety and security expert said, "Do not arm your staff. You must have trained SROs. You are making a terrible mistake. If we're breaking children, we're testing, we're gonna break bodies if we do not properly fund." That's $266,000. Then we have another program, School City. School City, in the paperwork submitted to the board, was, it is used by public, by public to access the cost to benefit to taxpayers, and it's used to provide academic achievement, learning gains to students, parents, teachers, school admin, and staff. Just of those, just to let you know, I have never, my kids take tests in School City. I've never seen one. I've come back, I've never seen a grade, I've never seen a learning gain, a test question, nor do I even know when they're taking the tests. It's all a big secret, and it's for a grade. Children don't even know when they're gonna ta, they know when they're gonna take them, they have no idea what's on them. Their teachers can't teach them, or teachers don't even know what's on them. You're paying another $218,000 for School City to write interim assessments. There's a half a million dollars we could put to SROs. So, I don't know what else to do. We, we have a safety and security issue. Dr. Green is leaving. We are spending a half a million dollars on stuff that, you ought to see it. It's, it's very disturbing, comments. And as a reading specialist, I, I should leave them.
Thank you.
Any further public comment?
That was it. Thank you.
All right, members. On the motion to approve the consent items, it has been moved and seconded. We've had public comments. And is there any debate? Mr. Kennedy, for a comment?
Bridget, I just want to, very much of what you say I agree with, including your, most of your public comment at the beginning. I think you've hit the nail on the head. I would just make a suggestion that just get this information to us before the meeting. So, if we had had a week to digest this and go over it, it would have been helpful. Yeah, it is, yeah. Okay, thank you. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Any other comments?
Yes?
Okay.
The two items that I had for public comment for Mr. Gibalina, one was Manatee County School, and the other was future agenda items.
Okay, so you're, you, you signed up to comment on an item on the consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
She's saying there's no record of that. Is the board okay with moving forward?
I do show him signing up twice. I don't see the comment. But he did sign up twice. He just didn't stay on, sign up.
On the consent agenda, okay.
Yes.
So, he's under consent?
No, he, there's two lines where he signed up for public comment.
So, he did sign up.
One of them was not designated as a consent item, so.
I understand.
But he's saying he signed up for consent, so.
Okay. All right, Mr. Gibalina, why don't you come on down? You got it.
Excuse me?
Yes, Mr..
Before Mr. Gibalina starts, as a, Ms. Mendel, as a point of information, I think I should tell you that the Chair of the State Board of Education, a co, former colleague of mine. Yeah, I was gonna say, she's a black woman, an African-American woman, rather, and an attorney. So, it's not a board of just old white guys, okay? Just, I think there's a second female there, from South Count, from Miami.
Okay, 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 okay. We can take it up.
Okay.
Your point, we'll take it.
That was my point.
Mr. Gibalina, would you please join us at the podium?
For the record, Glenn Gibalina. In any event, I want to talk about two items on consent. I don't know why I didn't copy and paste, but I apologize for that. One of them's gonna be 18 and 19 on the Southeast High School roof, $5 million. I don't remember it being that high, but it is what it is. Again, while you're putting a roof on, you should be looking at some renewable energy. And that's all I'm gonna say about that, because I'll be back for that. Number 11, approval of the technical teaching certificate. I have to tell you, I've been out at the port. I've seen the, met the welding instructor out at MTC, the instructor there. Outstanding job. In fact, I think most of the high schools should intern out there because they grow their own flowers, they have hydroponics, they have their own fish. 6,000 chickens puts my little farm to shame. Welding, carpentry. It's, it's another MTC, except you can't go home at night. And that's how I look at it. So, whatever they need out there, I would, I would strongly support giving these funds to the Sheriff's Office. It's a great facility. I would encourage you all out to go out there and take a tour of it. Took a tour of it a couple of months ago with the Dr. C, and the rest of the gardeners out there, quite impressed. So, can't say enough about MTC. Career in a year. Took a tour of both campuses last week with the Federation, very impressed with everything, with the, with the Sheriff's Department, with the medical, EMT. You've got people coming from different counties just to go to MTC. It's a, it's a flagship of the school system, quite frankly. So, I don't know how much you can, how much more you can improve on it, other than putting some solar panels on the roof. In any event, I would encourage this board to fund this project and more out there. I think they can be expanded to the carpentry and maybe some plumbing. I mean, that welding facility has got laser cutters, three-phase, three-phase welders, TIG, MIG, you name it, they got it. And they're good at it. Those, those folks that are gonna get a second chance won't have any, any problem getting a job in the industry after they leave with those skills. in the industry after they leave with those skills from the instruction, instructors from MTC. So it's not around the corner for them, they go the extra mile to go out there, they have to go through screening, they gotta pass the guard gate, I mean, it's above and beyond the role of a school teacher, and my hat's off to all the instructors out there, so kudos to you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And just a note, I did respond to you on social media to meet with you about your affordable housing and sustainability, and we will have that meeting. All right. All right, members, we have now had additional public comment. Is there any further debate on the consent agenda? Mr. Minor.
Mr. Chair, point of order, excuse me, point of order, is it possible to have a motion to move any of the items on consent agenda at this time to remove from consent agenda?
It's been moved and seconded, we are now in debate, I do believe you can make a motion to move an item from the consent agenda to new business.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to move to remove from the consent agenda the two items that Mrs. Mendel was talking about, items five and six, to new business. Non-consent.
Which numbers? Let's make sure we got the right numbers.
Five and six, two new business discussion items pulled from consent.
Okay, so School City, okay, Mr. Minor has moved that items number five, approval to purchase Reading Plus subscription, SDMC, numbers nineteen dash zero zero one nine dash SM, not to exceed two hundred and sixty-six thousand nine hundred dollars, and to remove item number six, approval of renewal of the use of Hillsborough County Public Schools' data assessment platform, number one four zero eight zero dash DST, School City, Inc., SDMC sixteen dash zero zero twelve dash SM R three, not to exceed two hundred and seventeen thousand five hundred and seventy-four dollars and eighteen cents, renewal number three, to remove them from the consent agenda and place them on the new business for items removed from the consent agenda. Is there a second? Okay, having been moved and seconded, is there any discussion on moving the item from the consent agenda to new business? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, if the clerk would show those two items under new business have removed from the consent agenda. Members, we are now on the consent agenda excluding numbers five and six, having been moved and seconded, having had public hearing and debate, is there any further debate? Hearing none, members all in favor, aye? Aye.
Aye.
Show the consent agenda adopted, with the exception of five and six, which have been moved to new business. Members, we are now on new business items, the discussion items pulled from consent, so we are now on item number eighteen, approval of Southeast High, oh, no we're not, sorry, we are now on the first item that was removed, which is number five, approval to purchase Reading Plus subscription, SDMC, numbers one nine dash zero zero one nine dash SM, not to exceed two hundred and sixty-six thousand nine hundred. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Okay, having been moved and seconded, we've already had public comment. Is there any further, yes?
I'd like to make a motion to amend, to make a motion to amend that, the fund, go ahead.
I, I think, to put it in its proper order, since we removed it from the consent items, I think it's now we should consider taking public comment now that it's been moved from the consent items, because we now have new business. Mr. Dye?
Mr. Chair, I don't know that that's necessary, because it was available for public comment when it was under consent.
Okay, fair enough.
All you're doing is moving it to a different place to take, take action on it.
Okay, all right, so it's been moved and seconded, and Mr. Kennedy, would you?
Jim, be ready.
With debate?
I'd like to make a motion, I would like to amend the motion to, sorry, give me a second to find my words here, a motion to amend, to allocate the funds in question to the school guardian program.
Wait, wait, wait a second.
I don't see a recommendation from the superintendent.
It was, I'm in record, consented.
Consent was recommended.
Has there been a motion, been a motion made to approve it?
No, that's what we're saying, because it's been moved down to new business.
Right, no, there was, there was a motion to approve it, and then there was a motion, and it was seconded, so now we're in debate. I think it would be appropriate, and then hold your, your motion to amend, given the fact that we've removed it from the consent agenda for either the superintendent or the deputy superintendent of instruction to provide the description for the board.
Well, one, I believe the funding source is categorical, therefore it cannot be used for, and number two, our guardian program is already funded, we already have it funded, there's no need to move.
Got you, okay.
But you can't use these dollars for that.
I had a feeling somebody was gonna say that.
So any further discussion or debate? I mean, what, what, what I would add, Mr. Minor, did you want my comment? Or debate?
No, I, I think, you know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote no, based on what I've heard, you know, about, you know, this program, so.
Okay. Is there any further debate or discussion?
Well, I mean, is this a fluency program? Is that what it sounded like it was describing?
For tier-three intervention.
And are we seeing results?
This has been the first year of our implementation.
This will be the second year, right?
Well, next year will be the second year, and we are incorporating middle school at that time. It is research-based, and it has been implemented in many districts already. We receive feedback from our teachers that they really do like the new program. We are required to have intervention for tier-three services for our non-proficient students. We have not received results yet, because we haven't had the release of the ninth and tenth grade, it's predominantly for our ninth and tenth grade. We tend to focus on ACT and SAT prep for our eleventh and twelfth graders that are non-proficient, but we are expecting to see some great results, because we've seen it from other districts, but we have not, we've not received any information yet from the state, so that we can correlate our data with the FSA scores directly.
And what I'd like to remind the members, if you recall, we did have a workshop around these software applications, and if you recall, and Mrs. Saunders has, has basically re-stated that, that this is in the first year of that, that program that we've been using, and the, the administration under Mrs. Saunders' direction has an evaluation system in place where we'll, she will, the administration will be evaluating this particular piece of software once we get the data back, and I would also just caution us that Mrs. Mendel's comments were based on comments from teachers and students, we weren't provided with any peer-reviewed journal articles regarding this application. And so, I, I do have personal confidence, because we have charged the administration with evaluating the money that we're spending on these types of applications, and to come back to us with an ROI regarding their effectiveness or lack thereof. Any other further debate? Okay, members, we are on the approval to purchase Reading Plus subscription, SDMC, number one nine dash zero zero one nine dash SM, not to exceed two hundred and sixty-six thousand nine hundred dollars, it's been moved and seconded and debated. Members, if you will place your votes. Okay, show the motion adopted, four, two, one. All right, item number six from the consent agenda, which is now on new business, is the approval of renewal of the use of Hillsborough County Public Schools' data assessment platform, number one four zero eight zero dash DST, School City, Inc., SDMC one six dash zero zero one two dash SM R three, not to exceed two hundred and seventeen thousand five hundred and seventy-four dollars and eighteen cents, it's renewal number three. Do I have a motion? Been moved by Mr. Kennedy, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Vice Chair Messenger. Members, is there any debate?
Mr. Minor?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. On these things, we hear about supporting information, and I will confess, I'm remiss, I'm, I'm the one who should say, okay, where is the supporting data, you know, for expending all this money? You know, provide it to us if you want our vote. Is it too much to expect that automatically, I guess so, and so I, I'm remiss in not saying, administration, make the case, you know, for expending all this money. Show to me where you say is research-based, I hear that, it's almost, I can't phrase that, and I, I think that when we start spending, you know, nearly a quarter million dollars for this and a quarter million dollars for the other program, I, I'd really like to see, you know, the, the reviews showing that this is a good use of, even if it's categorical, it's public money, and I will confess, again, you know, I, I, it's really my burden to ask for it, but I think that absent the information that justifies this expenditure, half a million dollars, I intend to vote no. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Minor. Mr. Kennedy?
I just want to reiterate, Bridget, I respect, but again, the timing issue, just give us a little advance notice. I did like your idea about using these funds, but if these are two pots of monies that can't mix, you know, here we are, so I'll prove. Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Any further debate? All in favor for approval of renewal of the use of Hillsborough County Public Schools' data assessment platform, number one four zero eight zero dash DST, School City, Inc., SDMC one six dash zero zero one two dash SM R three, not to exceed two hundred and seventeen thousand five hundred and seventy-four dollars and eighteen cents, renewal number three. Say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Minor? All opposed? No?
Yeah, I'm opposed, yeah. I'm gonna say aye, I'm gonna say, no, thank you.
All right, show the motion approved. Members, we are now on new business, non-consent items. Dr. Green?
Mr. Chair, I recommend approval of naming the Manatee High School band room to Jim Bruce Music Hall, no financial impact.
So moved. Okay, have been moved and seconded, and this was an item where we needed, it was just a majority of the board, correct?
Supermajority.
Supermajority, all right, members, so we need a supermajority, and having been moved and seconded on the approval to name Manatee High School Band Room to Jim Bruce Music Hall, is there a debate or comment?
There's public comment.
Okay, public comment, Vice Chair Messenger.
Come on down, Linda Boone.
Was he still alive?
Yes.
Yes, he's currently teaching, he's getting ready to retire next week.
Well, good evening, board members, Dr. Green, and additional participants tonight. Thank you for allowing me to speak again this evening regarding the naming of the Manatee High School Band Room in honor of Jim Bruce. I've known Jim since he came to Manatee High in nineteen eighty-eight, at that time I was beginning my seventh of twenty-five years as director of the Sugar Cane's dance team. He was the third band director I was to work with, so I certainly had no idea at the time that we would end up working together for thirty years. Due to the great professional relationship that we developed, I stayed on as an assistant to the band program after I stopped doing, being the director of the Sugar Cane's, and we lost our second band director unit. I feel very qualified to speak to the appropriateness of this action, as I've witnessed firsthand the impact that Jim has had on his students, the high school program, and the community. During his time at MHS, he dedicated himself to the band program and its success. The Jazz Band earned Superior at District for twenty-eight of those thirty years, the Wind Ensemble earned Superior twenty-nine of those years, and the Marching Band earned Superior for all thirty years. He has also rehearsed and conducted the Pitt Orchestra for the high school theater productions. The Wind Ensemble also performs at graduation every year. His excellence as a band director has earned him the respect and admiration of his colleagues throughout the state. He's a member of a very selective band director fraternity called Phi Beta Mu, and he also received the Oliver Hobbs Award, I mentioned this last time, in two thousand and sixteen, a very prestigious award, for his superior performance by his bands and also service to the Florida Bay Masters Association. But in addition to doing all these things, he's also dedicated a great deal of time to our community. The Marching Band participates every year in the Martin Luther King Junior Parade, as well as the DeSoto Parade, so of course he's there. The Jazz Band has played for the Golden Herald Awards for twenty-nine years, the last twenty-eight in a row. He's rehearsed and provided Wind Ensemble and Jazz Band performances at numerous events over the years, Chamber of Commerce Breakfast, Sarasota Youth Foundation, Just Kids, Just Music, Sarasota Jazz Club, and many other events. He's made a great impact on his students' lives as well, he inspired them to love music, the appreciation for practice and performance of it. He has even inspired many of his students to pursue, I'm sorry, to pursue a career in music and/or music education. We had a really nice final concert last week, and it was interesting to see how many students came back to see his final performance as the conductor. The initial idea of this naming came from the senior band students, but was enthusiastically embraced by their parents, our boosters, and most importantly, our school administration. We would like to be able to honor Jim Bruce and all that he has done for the band program, his students, their parents, Manatee High School, and the entire Manatee School District. Thank you very much.
Just, just one question, how many of his graduates went on to the University of South Florida, Heard of Thunder Marching Band?
There were some.
Many.
Yes, there were some, definitely.
Thank you.
And there are music teachers throughout the state now that were his students.
Thank you. All right, members, we are on the approval to name Manatee High School Band Room to Jim Bruce Music Hall, having had public comment, is there any debate or comments from the board members? Mr. Minor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm a former Mr. Sugar Cane, I had a sash, I don't remember if that one.
You were a Sugar Cane?
That's, that's, what was my title, Linda?
You were the honorary Mr. Sugar Cane.
Honorary Mr. Sugar.
I gotta see a picture of that.
I wouldn't say I looked cute with a sash, but I was proud of it, and.
Paint him like a candy stripe.
Yeah, it was, it was sort of like it, but, you know, Linda and, you know, many others and, you know, I said it so well about Jim Bruce, that it's a great credit to the music teaching, the school, you know, our district, and I don't think there's anybody who can't be thankful for his, you know, being part of this community, and I think this is still a wonderful way to go about honoring the greatness that he has, you know, provided, and I thank Linda and the kids and everybody for bringing this up, so that we can honor him in this way. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Minor. Mr. Kennedy?
Oh, Mr. Guy, stand up.
Click your button.
Oh, I gotta push my button.
Mr. Kennedy?
No, I just want to say, it's really, it's an honor as a former colleague to be here for this, to, to approve this, and I think the highest praise that we as educators can get is when you share a student with somebody, and that student comes to you and talks about how great the other person is, and that's, those who had Mr. Bruce or, or under his guidance and, you know, under his, in one of the many, as Linda mentioned, the many things that he reaches into in kids' lives he reaches into, so. Jim was always one of those people you constantly heard about from your students about, you know, he, oh, he's one of my favorites, and, and I mentioned Jonathan, my Tech Stock kid last week, he, Mr. Bruce has had such an effect on his life that he is going to a camp before. He, Mr. Bruce has had such an effect on his life that he is going to a camp before his senior year of high school because he wants to continue doing a professional marching after he graduates from high school and college. So, I mean, it's.
Cool.
Mr. Bruce has had a dramatic effect on Jonathan's life, and that says a lot about him.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Vice Chair Messenger?
Well, I was one of those students. Mr. Bruce was my teacher, and so.
So you know what I mean?
I know what you mean. Taught me music theory. So I'm absolutely honored to even be part of this decision. I mean, he was wonderful. I wish he was here tonight.
Thank you, thank you. All right, all right, all right, members. Okay, members, we are now, we are now on the approval to name Manatee High School Band Room to the Jim Bruce Music Hall. In accordance with our policy seven two five zero, we need a supermajority. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Show it unanimously approved and adopted. Thank you, members.
It's a unanimous, supermajority.
All right, members, we have an item under new business that was added. The item is the approval, is to authorize Dr. Green to seek and accept other employment. I move to authorize Dr. Green to seek and accept other employment and that we appoint an interim superintendent subject to Dr. Green's acceptance of other employment and starting on the date, on a date certain, and that Dr. Green is entitled to all accrued benefits. I have a copy of the motion. Do I have a second? Having been moved and seconded, any debate or discussion? I'll wait till you get a copy of it. Mr. Minor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I'd like to move that this matter be postponed until our next meeting. This was not placed upon the agenda, well, until about an hour ago, hour and a half ago. And I think it's important that our community, you know, have more notice about this than just less than two hours of time to consider how they, you know, wish for us to vote, to have that input. It is important, you know, to the community. It affects everyone in the community, how we vote on this matter. What, how it affects everybody in this community is that we have, individually, I think everyone here, certainly me, have told our community we're going to be very careful of how we treat the assets of this district.
I, I, I don't think we have a second on your motion to postpone. It's been moved and seconded, we're on debate. Hearing no second on the motion to postpone.
Mr. Chair, I, I think I have a right to explain the motion.
I think after it's seconded.
No, that's when you get into debate or making the motion.
I think there's no need to discuss if it isn't seconded. Yes?
My, my understanding, I thought, I thought what I heard was, I thought you made the motion and Mr. Cologne seconded.
Correct, correct. And so we were on debate on the motion. In Mr. Minor's debate, he's going about explaining his motion to postpone, but his motion to postpone hasn't been seconded. If it's seconded, then we can go into discussion. Mr. Dye?
Mr. Chair, I agree with that. I think you can make the motion. If it's seconded, then, then you can, you can argue in favor of it or argue against it.
In hearing no second, we don't need to debate his motion to postpone. So we are now back on debate of the motion as seconded, which principally, to paraphrase, is to provide Dr. Green the authority to seek and accept other appointment. Should she accept other appointment, then at some date in the future, we will appoint an interim superintendent to be the interim superintendent effective on the date that Dr. Green leaves our employ. And that she is entitled to the accrued benefits that is allowed in her contract. Mr. Kennedy on debate.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just am curious about date certain. We don't want to name that date certain.
Well, I would like for you to amend it for date certain, but, I mean, I think we're okay. I mean.
Okay, I'm, I'm just curious. It's, it's not, it's not a big thing. I'm just, if we're putting a date certain in there.
It's not a date certain. I mean, we, I think, based on our discussion earlier, I think we understand the necessary timeline to be in accord in, in compliance with state law, that we have a superintendent named, which we're expecting it to be by July first. But we don't need to put it in there, I think, for this motion.
Okay, that's fine. I don't think it matters either way. I was just curious.
Any further debate?
Mr. Chair?
Hearing, yes, Mr. Minor?
Yes, I do have. On your motion, this is the debate. We have, the board, a contract with Superintendent Green for four years, beginning June one in twenty sixteen. Now, according to my math, four years from twenty sixteen goes to twenty twenty. That's a contract made twenty sixteen, and it provides the exclusive employment of Dr. Green with this district. The effect of, you know, the chair's motion is to say, well, she does not have to complete this, a contract that was made with our district. It means that for the two years remaining on this contract, our community will lose out on great talent and dedication, as we have seen for these past two years. That's a loss for our community. The, it also means that this community will have to expend, you know, time and money, you know, to recruit a, a new superintendent, which certainly was not contemplated when this district entered into a four-year contract with Dr. Green. And I think that, you know, this loss of money, of talent, is something that really the entire, you know, community should have an opportunity to comment on after at least, you know, a week's notice instead of an hour and a half notice. And as to, should we disboard, you know, by adopting the chair's motion, you know, basically waive any compensation, you know, for not fulfilling this contract? We talk a lot in our campaigns for millage and for, uh, sales tax, and in our personal campaigns for election about the importance of watching the school district's treasury and taking care of the money, making sure that it's used wisely, and not lose out on our assets. And one of the most important assets, certainly the most wonderful asset from an employment standpoint, is Dr. Green. I, and I think that that deserves, you know, the, the public fully understanding what we'd be losing if we approved the chair's, you know, motion. And I, I think that it's the responsible thing, at the very least, is to postpone this until the community is fully aware of the consequences of it and has a, an opportunity to, you know, comment on it. And I think as a board, you know, we should, you know, provide the community that opportunity to comment on this before we go ahead. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Minor. Mr. Cologne? Mr. Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to amend your motion to add, add the following, and I'll just go by your motion. I hereby move to authorize Dr. Green to seek and accept other employment and that we appoint an interim superintendent subject to Dr. Green's acceptance of other employment and starting on, I guess, Saturday, June thirtieth. My intention here being that Dr. Green's last day would be Friday, June twenty-ninth.
If you don't mind, the problem with that, the problem with that is, is she would have a gap in her state employment for those, like, two or three days.
Oh, I see. Okay. Acceptance of other employment and starting on, okay, no, that's fine. I just, I would just like to provide some clarity about when we're going to make this transfer between Dr. Green.
I think, I think we're probably safe, because of the comments that are going to be in the record, that the intent is to have an interim superintendent start as soon as we have a vacancy in the superintendency.
Okay. Which, if I may.
Yes.
Which, as we discussed at the workshop, Dr. Green's intention is to finish, is to go through the.
Conclude on June thirtieth.
Thank you, okay.
And then, so we would anticipate on the first, and.
Okay, I will withdraw my motion.
Yeah, thank you. And, and to, 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 to Mr., to Mr. Minor's comments, I think the community has been well aware of the possibility of Dr. Green being selected as the superintendent for Duval County for weeks, that this, this has been going on, has been in the press. And in accordance with the superintendent's employment contract in paragraph two, which is what Mr. Minor is referring to, it provides for an exception as herein otherwise permitted in advance by the board. So what we are doing by approving this motion is giving Dr. Green the authority in advance to enter into the agreement to be the superintendent of Duval, which she expects having that agreement June first, which will allow her to provide the thirty days' notice, and that is why this motion is important. I, I do believe it's a fait accompli that Dr. Green is going to be the next superintendent of the Duval County School District, and given her service to the district and where she has brought this district in, in, in financial performance, academic achievement, student success, I do not want her to be in a position where her ability to negotiate and complete an agreement with the school district of Duval County is in any way compromised or threatened because we have not taken this action. So I would ask your support if there is no further, Mr. Cologne? Is there any further debate? Or comments?
I just want to say that I.
Microphone, please.
I'm sorry, I apologize. You know, I, I said this before and I, at the workshop, and I'll just say it again. This contract does not provide for specific penalties, and since I don't believe in indentured servitude, I think it's necessary for the board to pass this motion.
So with that being said, members, I, Mr. Minor for additional comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, you are making reference to paragraph two of the four-year contract executed June one, or effective date, June one, twenty sixteen. Paragraph four talks in terms of, it's a four-year contract. It's something that the, this board signed, Dr. Green signed, what we've been living under. It's only within this last week that we hear that the board up in Duval County is agreeable to offering her employment, even though we did know that she was, you know, looking up there and had been interviewed, but it was only, I think, you know, last Friday, late in the day that we heard that they were in a position to offer her a contract. And so I, I, I think it's, you know, very short notice for our community to take a, a look at this. I am very grateful. There's nobody in this room who has been a more ardent supporter and appreciative of what Dr. Green has done. But I work for the district. I don't work for her. I work for, you know, doing the best for everybody in this school district and asking someone, you know, allowing someone, it's not servitude to ask compliance with a contract for services. And to respond to Mr. Cologne's, you know, comments, there, there isn't, there isn't no requirement that there be specified in any contract the particular penalties for non-compliance. It just isn't. And in this, I, I would think that with maybe two weeks thinking about it, you know, some kind of quid pro quo, you know, for waiving compliance with the contract could be made, be it that she does stay here, you know, for a little bit longer, or that the, some of the expenses that we have to incur because she's not complying with the four-year requirement of the contract be underwritten by her, or something of that sort. And we haven't had time to really think about that as a community or any persons, and I think that it's important as a preacher of looking after the, the assets of this district that we at least have a time to think about it. And that's why I thought that putting this off for two weeks would be appropriate for our community, and I think it's only fair under this contract for our district that we go with that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Minor. Members, having been moved, seconded, debated, we are now voting on the chair's motion to authorize Dr. Green to seek and accept other employment and that we appoint an interim superintendent subject to Dr. Green's acceptance of other employment and starting on a date certain, and that Dr. Green is entitled to all accrued benefits. Members, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, sorry, I was the one who needed to hit the mover button. All right, all opposed?
Aye.
All right, show the motion adopted four to three with Mr. Minor in the dissent. Oh, four to, four to one, four to one, four to one, four to one.
There are two votes over here.
Correct the audio recording there. Four to one, four to one.
Right. If I only had two more votes, then I'd be all set.
Did you vote three times?
I, I.
Yes, he did, he did, he did. I saw him hit the button. I saw him hitting the button.
No.
I didn't know you were from New York.
Mr. Cologne, that slander, I voted four times.
But, but, Mr. Minor, I will assure you, in the agreement with any future superintendent, we will have an adequate period of time, should there be a resignation, to allow for time for us to, to prepare for the departure. And, and I appreciate your, your legal eye on, on the agreement. Members, do we have any agenda requests for regular meetings and/or workshops? I think our plate is full. Okay, hearing none. Updates, I think Mr. Titlebaum has a brief update, and then we'll go to Mr. Dye.
Okay. Mr. Chair, members of the board, I expect by tomorrow that I will have a finalized response to the ACLU. A draft response was sent, and research has been completed, and a letter I anticipate being sent out tomorrow, and I will be giving a copy to the board simultaneously.
Thank you.
Thank you, members.
Thank you, Mr. Dye. Oh, that was brief? Instructural update, Mrs. Saunders.
Yes, I just want to congratulate all of our seniors that graduated on our marathon week, last week, and I know Ms. Messenger was with us in spirit. Certainly understandable, but it, it certainly is exciting to see the momentous occasion where the children are able to walk across the stage, but we know that there were many teachers and parents and community members that helped that occasion to, to be fulfilled. So it was wonderful. We were able to even endure the rain at Manatee High.
It was all rainbow, a rainbow.
Saw a rainbow, and it just reminded, reminds us all what business we're really in for, and it's to ensure that all of our students graduate.
Our finest product.
Yes, we congratulate them all and thank them all for a job well done.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for all you do. Mr. Serrana, operations update.
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. I just want to make sure that everyone's aware of how, how we proceed in our district with regards to vendors. From time to time, people may not appreciate or agree with how we do something, and if they do reach out to vendors, the, the practice of the district is the vendor does not get in direct communications with the individual, they go through the district. So with the concern with the architect, all those people. So with the concern with the architect, all those people are vented through a bid process, they're experts in their field. They do not make the decision in isolation. From conception to open, to the day that the school is opened, we have teams that comprise all the decisions that are made, and we vent that through those teams, and then we bring those to you as a school board. So you're aware of what our intentions are and what the schools are going to look like. We also, about a year ago, or maybe a little bit more, we did do a solar presentation regarding the new high school, and how it would not be cost-efficient to do even a building, let alone the whole complex. And so I just wanted to make sure that we have addressed those issues with you, and if, again, you ever want, you know, an update on that, we'll be happy to supply one again at the workshop, but I just don't want our architect or construction teams to get a bad rep. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Dr. Green's superintendent remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm not going to make too many remarks tonight, because this is not my last board meeting. I will be at the board meetings, thank you. I just want to say that, one, we did have a wonderful graduation season, and it's so refreshing, it reminds us why we do this job, when they walk across that stage, and those young minds, young faces that are excited, some of them completely, I don't want to say clueless, but some of them don't know what they want to do with their lives, but they know they've completed this portion of their life, and now they have opportunities to make some decisions. So we're very excited for them. I do want to remind our students, we only have a few more days left, and that tomorrow will be the last day, with the exception of one high school for backpacks. So parents know that tomorrow is the last day backpacks will be allowed, the last three days are early release days, and there, we will not allow backpacks, and so that information probably went out on Connect Ed.
That is always the case.
Yeah, that is always the case. On the last three days, we, no backpacks. And that our goal is to ensure that we end our school year very strong, and that all students are going to be safe and get ready to enjoy their summer. Mr. Minor, I'm very appreciative of everything that this district has done for me and this community. I would never do anything to bring shame or anything negative, not only to this district, but to myself and my family. So while I know why you were doing what you were doing, I just needed you to know that this was something I was called to do, this was something that was put in my path to be at the right time, and this is the time. And so I want to say thank you to the board for moving forward with that recommendation and approving it. My entire professional career has always been about making an impact, whether it's an impact on students, an impact on teachers, an impact on my community. It, that's what I'm about, and I think I've done that for Manatee. There's always room for improvement, we will never be perfect, but when we work as a team, things work out perfectly well. And for this team, it will move forward, and this district will move forward, and I will move forward with Duval Public Schools. And so I just want to say thank you to the board members, to our legal team, to the deputies who sit up here with me, that it takes all of us to ensure that Manatee will continue to move forward. And there are many people who may be concerned about me leaving, and there probably is some people who think, well, okay, we're happy, we're supporting Dr. Green moving on. But what I hope everyone comes together and makes a commitment to is that no matter who's in charge, it's always about doing what's best for the school district of Manatee County, always. And the last two years, our community has embraced this school district, so much so that they passed two referendums, and it is so much bigger than one person, and it's bigger than me. So, Mr. Minor, thank you for your efforts to keep me, but I know that, I know that the next person, they don't need to feel my shoes, they just need to walk this school district into the right, in the right direction, which is headed on at this time. So, thank you, and I want to tell our teachers and administrators, thank you. This definitely has been probably one of the most interesting school years, starting off with an eclipse, all the way until the last school day, it's definitely been an adventure, and please enjoy your summer, and know that we appreciate everything that everyone has done, and come back in August renewed and refreshed and ready to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Green. Mr. Cologne, will you lead us off in our board comments?
Sure, why not?
Microphone, microphone.
Once again, I'm being technologically challenged here, I'm sorry. I just want to echo a couple, one of Dr. Green's comments. It has been a great school year, we've seen great strides, the district is really hitting on pretty much all cylinders almost, and I think that her whole administrative managed senior team is a credit to that, even Mr. Titlebaum. I had to do that. I want to say one or two things. I want to congratulate all our graduates, especially all the parents who helped get them to where they needed to be. I've been stopped a number of times by parents, both here in Manatee County, and even in Sarasota this morning, I was stopped by a lady jogging through the roundabout, who stopped me to thank me. "Mr. Cologne, Mr. Cologne, you shook my daughter's hand as she crossed the stage." I felt really good about that. It's really important that these graduates know we wish them well, and we want them to move on with their lives and their careers and their college, if that's what their goal is. And it's really a credit to Manatee County that so many of our students, who are not sure exactly where they want to go, have decided, rather than just sit home, they'll choose the military for their option, to get, to further their education and get the training they need. And it's not for everybody, but for some people, it's a path, and I think that's really I want to say one thing about school safety, because I think it's important since we've been discussing it. I think that all our schools need to be fenced. I was at Manatee High School the other day for the graduation, it is completely fenced. There is no access to Manatee High School without you going through fencing, and that's a good opportunity to have metal detectors at that high school, and every high school should have them. The campuses are too large for even two offices to patrol adequately. It's been utilized in many other cities, Chicago, LA, New York, and unfortunately, and many other, Miami, right here in the state of Florida. But it's an opportunity for us to make our children feel safer. And to those who say, you know, we don't want to turn our schools into prisons, I just want to know, as I've said before, if they've gotten on an airplane recently, because I know I feel much better about getting on a plane when I know everybody is screened, and I know our students will feel safer, and I'll feel better about it, and I think a lot of parents will as well. So I think it's important that we consider that. It's not the whole, only solution, but it's part of a solution. It's part of a security plan. And I think, you know, I'd like the rest of the board, and I'd like parents to weigh in on it as well. As Mr. Minor likes to say, he wants the community's input, I think they should give us some input. And that's my comments for the night, and I'll hold the rest for Dr. Green for next time.
Thank you, Mr. Cologne. Mr. Kennedy?
Thank you, Dr. Green. You have two more meetings with us, right? We hope, God willing. No, I, real quick, as has been said, I just want to, you know, Cindy, you said it well. You know, that reminds us what we're all doing here, and to our teachers and staff that got them onto that stage, and their parents, as Mr. Cologne said, and it really is, it strikes me every year, but I forget, until every graduation ceremony, is just the diversity of kids that we have, and on so many different, and diversity in so many different ways, and it just always kind of, this is kind of corny, but it just kind of warms my heart, like, all these, all these different kinds of kids and different personalities, and it's just, it's, it's a long four days of six ceremonies, but it's, and it's always exhausting, but it's definitely worth it. And like, to our teachers and staff, you know, we're at the end of another school year, I know it went by like a snap, but, you know, enjoy your summer, to our kids, be safe out there, enjoy your summer, and that's about it, and we'll see you in a couple weeks.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Mr. Minor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, lots been going on, and I, we have so much to be thankful for. We, I'm very, very thankful that Dr. Green's been with us. My passion to keep her with us is pretty evident, and, but I wish her best wherever she may be, and wherever she may be is fortunate to have her there. The graduations really is a touching thing for me. I get very emotional about it. I'm so happy for the parents and the kids, and it's fun, but serious, and I'm going to miss, you know, seeing some of them around that I know. I make new friends with these graduations, people I maybe didn't know before, or students I didn't know before, that, yeah, give me a relationship that seems pretty special. You know, one of the speakers at, you know, Southeast, going to be going to my college, Amherst, and there aren't too many, we don't, and so that was pretty, he was one of the speakers, and wonderful, wonderful young man, and so many other young people. And I just, the passion in the speakers, the young lady who was an undocumented student, the whole, if you were there, you would realize that everybody in the convention stand stood up and applauded, and it was just such an emotional, you know, situation of praise and gratefulness, that we, through this school district, and very, maybe in a very small way, indirectly, this board made it possible, you know, for these students to get the education to move on in a positive way in their lives. And I thank the community for the privilege of being in that position, that in some way we've touched these lives to make them great people in our community and this world, and I thank everybody here for allowing me to be a part of that, and thank the community for letting me be part of that. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Minor, and I note that I think it was Palmetto's graduation, you had by far the loudest applause of any board member.
Well, it's because I gave the watchdog award at the FFA Future Farmers.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, okay.
It was quite evident.
And I served strawberry shortcake too, so.
All right, I'll try that next year. Vice Chair Messenger.
That's funny that you bring that up, because I actually have it as a note here about your watchdog award that you gave out at the FFA banquet.
That's correct.
You got that applause by bribery then, is what I'm hearing.
It has proved to be very successful in the past too, so thank you.
No, but, no, that's a real thing, Mr. Cologne, you, that was not in jest. There is a watchdog award, and you missed it not being at the FFA banquet.
Is it a barking puppy?
I think it was a plaque, maybe even some money.
It's a plaque.
I don't know. But I enjoyed the FFA banquet. I know Mr. Minor always enjoys serving dessert at the FFA banquet. There was a whole pig, Mr. Serrano enjoyed that.
Yeah.
I enjoyed it, I thought it was delicious, and so I do not get to go to the graduations since I have a newborn, I didn't want to bring home germs, but I did enjoy watching everybody on TV, and so did Olivia. She enjoyed watching all of you, you guys are all famous up here.
Hi, Olivia.
And that is just about it, I'm pretty short and sweet there. I think I've said everything I have to say to Dr. Green today, I think she's heard a lot from me, but that is it.
And thank you, and I too would like to share the, really the enjoyment and the pride that we get out of attending the commencements and the thousands of new graduates. I think Mr. Cologne and I may very well make a motion for a new policy that there are no index finger rings or thumb rings on the right hand. It took us, it took us a few commencements to figure out what was poking us when we shook these ladies' hands, but we figured out it was thumb rings and index finger rings. So any of you out there, we got the point. But do, you know, like to commend the teachers and the staff, because as we were asking the graduates where they're going next, military academies, Ivy League schools, preeminent universities, now preeminance is FSU, UF, and USF, preeminance is not yet UCF. The Florida's three preeminent universities, impressive.
But national champions.
Yeah, no, but there is only one national football champion, and they have their own license plate, they have their own license plate.
And deservedly so.
They do, they do. I've got to admit, darn good football team. A lot were going to UCF too, many of them were going to UCF, so it's a testament to the work that Dr. Green and the administration has done, and the community should be proud because Dr. Green being offered what I'm sure she would describe as her dream position as an educator and leader is due to the community coming together and embracing her leadership and providing her with the resources, including the financial resources, to take this district to a much higher level. We do have a couple more meetings with her. I want to thank the board for the good work we did today. We are moving forward with a multi-dimensional approach to school security in both hardening, technology, fencing, as well as staff and training, and we will have the safest schools that we can possibly deliver in August to all the teachers, a safe end to the year. We look forward to all of you returning enthused, and tell your friends that the school district of Manatee County is a great place to work, and Manatee County is a great place to live. Encourage them to leave the school districts that they're working at and to come and apply if it's not, the process to getting them hired is not moving fast enough. My email's out there, give them my cell phone number. We want your friends and colleagues from across the state to come to work at the school district of Manatee County, where we expect to have some of the highest wages for teachers and paraprofessionals and bus drivers and administrators in the schools, okay? None of us get any of it. And with that, I thank all of you, we're embarking on a new dimension for the district, and bear with us, bear with us. With that, do I have a motion to adjourn? With that, do I have a motion to adjourn? Hearing no. Without, without opposition, we're adjourned.
And if they want to come from Duval County, that's okay too.
No, 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 no.